We call this meeting and make the county board commissioners to order. And we'd like to welcome everybody here for your certain air welcome guests. Glad you're toast to spend your evening here with us. I know we do have a few announcements and we'll go around the room. Mr. Dexter, Ms. Horton, do you have any announcements to make?
As we said before, we lost a county employee this past weekend. Fastway, Mr. Jeff McCord with the Salt Lake State Department. So prayer with him as friends and relatives.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Commissioner Beal? I mean, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Go on. Okay. Just a couple, Mr. Chairman. This Friday, of course, at 2:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial will be the dedication of the Matt Henry Bridge that this board has worked to make happen. That will be at 2 o'clock. There will be buses available after the ceremony to drive up to the bridge. This is the main bridge that crosses the four lanes. If you don't know, it crosses the east and west lanes of the four lanes. There'll be buses there that if you're there, they'll carry you up there. The sheriff's department along with the Franklin police will take care of the... That is a busy place, as we all know. But that will be for photos. There'll be nothing said at the bridge because it's funny you couldn't hear that. So that's one thing we'd like to have. And it's open to the public. And Congressman will be there along with several other special guests. So we encourage everybody to come. Also, on the 13th, beginning around 5:30, we have a meeting for another Macon County employee who's battling cancer, Dennis Dick. That will be at the South Macon School. So bring a pocketful of money, eat a hot dog. That's all we need to do. So that'll be about 5:30. And we'd like to have a lot of folks come out and support. Dennis is going back to Philadelphia for treatment. And so this family not only needs help financially, but needs a prayer. So we're gonna let them have it. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Beal, Commissioner Coppers?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tate?
Yes, sir.
Lord, we're in Chester. Okay. Moving along, we're gonna observe a moment of silence tonight. I would mention we lost a Macon school employee the past few days, Mr. Fritz. Many of you knew he passed away. He was a coach, a friend, a teacher in his early 40s, which is too young to go. But he passed with dignity and we'd like to honor him with a moment of silence tonight. Also, Damian Heater was a student at Franklin High School and tragically passed away. As all of us know, it's been the news. And I know, I know, that family is, as many of you guys do. And our hearts go out to them. So with respect to them and others that we need to remember tonight, let's stand and have a moment of silence. Commissioner Coppers, can you lead some prayers?
Praise words to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we see it? Public hearing, I don't think we have one, Mr. Attorney. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. So we'll move on to our public comment period. This is a period of time that we invite members of the public to speak about any topic of their choice. And we have three tonight. We have Mr. Duane Pecu. Duane is here to speak to us about the Rec Park renovations. Duane, welcome.
I'm gonna take some of this time.
Okay. Are you speaking to this or...?
Yes, my name is Duane Pecu and I coach the, oh, about 150 to 180 little children that swim for us every summer for the fast swim team. This is Chris Stahl, our newly elected president of our team.
Congratulations.
That makes sense. I was gonna say that even the time this into landfill, Pecu. I didn't know you were gonna do that.
I got you. I too was trying to connect the dots. I got you.
And I also represent approximately 30 middle school students who swim with us in the fall after the Rec Park pool closes down and until the water gets too cold. And then at that point, we bus them down to Raven Gap to swim down there in the indoor pool for the last few weeks of the season. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to thank the commissioners for considering the Rec Park renovations. It's a little bit embarrassing whenever several hundred people from other communities come into our pool and for our swim meet. It's kind of getting a little embarrassing to let them go through that locker room and the pool area. And we just appreciate you guys, appreciate you considering that renovation. And long overdue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Pecu.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Pecu called me earlier today and asked if I'd come and say a few similar words. And I was gonna be here anyway, so I agreed. And I too want to thank you guys. I'm trying to figure out what exactly I was gonna say when I got up here. I thought about, you know, a decade of conference championships and the community pride in that, the hard work of the coach and Mrs. Coach. I didn't even remember their names until last year. But I thought instead, or maybe in addition to that, what I really wanted to do was talk about my girls and why we swim. It's not about the winning, certainly competition is part of it, but it's more about getting them off the couch, out in front of the TV, even reading a book, getting them outside, getting them motivated. My girls have swam for seven, five, and four years respectively. And, you know, for us, it's about four nights a week, an hour and a half, Mr. Pecu putting them through their paces. We all know the socioeconomic and personal health impacts of childhood obesity and not developing those good habits early in life. And so I just want to say, you know, this board has a longstanding commitment to the children of this county and their education. And I want to thank you for the commitment to their physical education. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for watching. Thank you, everyone, for watching. That page real good, I love it.
Thank you, Mrs. Coach, because that didn't get said enough.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Pecu. If the pool were to be heated by some stretch of imagination, would that stretch out your season a little bit and keep you from driving to Raven Gap?
Are you kidding?
Just thought I'd ask.
Definitely.
Just thought I'd throw that in.
But I'm really thankful that the school board allows us to use, you know, the bus to take us down there and back each day. And I think that actually probably saves us a lot of money in the long run with transportation.
And during this time, if you had a scale, you seen the participation doing like this, right, Coach Pecu? You've seen it?
Oh, when we first got here, we had, the year before we got here, there were 25. We've had 180.
If you have not had the opportunity, and I was invited a few years back, to come out and go to the conference meeting, you don't understand what he's talking about until you go to that pool and realize that every square inch of that pool deck is covered with a living human being. I've never seen so many people in a spot in all my life. And what he's telling you about the people that it serves is the gospel truth. I witnessed it with my own eyes. He browbeat me at school to get me out there, but I was really glad that he did because I finally got an appreciation for just how extensive that program is and how many young people that program touches. And I thank you for making me go and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pecu. Next, we have Alicia T. Welcome, Alicia. She's also here to speak, initially to do with Rec Park.
I wrote myself in notes so I could keep it short and sweet. I would just like to thank everyone who worked to make this happen. Franklin is past due for updates on our recreation facilities. When my kids were little, I would take them to Silva because the pool there was so much nicer. I hope this is the first step of many improvements needed for the entire Rec Park area. Thank you for dividing the project into three parts. Not only did it cut the expenses, but it gives local contractors an opportunity to work on the project. And we all know when local contractors are working, we get the trickle-down effect of revenue and payroll. I just, I think by improving this project, you give our younger generation hope for a brighter future in Franklin. And I just thank you all.
Thank you, Alicia.
I just want to...
Alicia, was that you had... One of her daughters is with her.
I just want to point that out. I just want to point out one of the finer civic students at Franklin High School.
If you'd have had a teacher.
If you only had a teacher, she'd be good. But what she doesn't understand is that we did have a test today and I don't forget when my students show up at commissioners' meetings. So thank you for me.
Are we talking extra credits?
Whoa, we're talking points.
I also'd like to say something on this. I talked with Alicia over here at this Florida Bureau meeting one night, too, about finding some extra space for the kids to practice basketball. And Jack checked on something and sort of fell through, but we're also trying to keep our eyes open for something. Anything comes up.
I really appreciate it.
Well, I was hoping that'd fly, that was right in your district right up there by that park.
Yeah, it would've been very convenient.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. T. Appreciate you very much being here tonight. We also have Ms. Kim Terrell, and she's here tonight. Kim, welcome you. She's also gonna speak about the Rec Park.
Thank you. I'm ecstatic, just let me tell you that. I have, I'm a native of Macon County as both sides of my family. And I've always been involved in sports and community sports, play softball and Little League basketball. And I have three children of my own and they, too, participate in the community league sports, basketball, softball, and baseball. We do travel ball, too, so I'm a very busy mama. It's kind of ironic, when I saw this in the paper, I was just jumping up and down. I just loved it, the idea. And I saw the proposal, saw the plan. And although we just go for recreation, my kids don't swim, but I think it's a great exercise and opportunity for kids that maybe don't play other sports. But it's ironic that I'm here because I didn't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you, but also let you know that I had actually thought about asking to come, asking permission to come and do a little slideshow. Because I had actually taken pictures the past couple of summers of things at the pool that actually are a danger. And Seth, I'm sure, can support me on this. The tiles are coming off, so it definitely is an embarrassment to those from other communities that come. There's a piece of metal that's sticking out outside of the kitty section. I guess that's where a lifeguard stand was. But there's a piece of metal that sticks up out of the ground. Prior to this summer, the actual, the picnic tables were rotten. We, I had rented the pool for a pool party for Andrea and we couldn't even use the tables because one was like this. Not to mention the stinky locker rooms. I'm 41, so I've been out of school for quite a while and there, nothing is different. Nothing's changed. So this is definitely...
I've been there a lot longer than that. I'm 51, that would change when I was a little kid.
Yeah, so I, you know, it's just, this is wonderful that y'all are making this step or taking this step to do something for our children because they are our future and they are worth the investment. And of course, because we're so active in basketball and baseball and softball, here's a tremendous thing there. We have over 230 girls signed up for softball and around 350 boys for baseball. And that's not to mention all the travel ball teams. We travel every other weekend to another county, to another town to play baseball. And there's so many other teams there and those counties, those towns are making the money off the hotels and the restaurants. Because I'm telling you, people will do anything for their child. And sports, I mean, you just can't say enough about it. And Chris, we're the same age, we graduate together, but...
You look a lot younger than I am.
You're younger than me, man. Holy...
You've aged, you've aged a bit. Chris stepped up there, please.
But he just mentioned...
I work for the county.
That was a stressful job. But he mentioned, you know, the childhood obesity and as a dietitian, I can't let this pass. You know, 30% of our children are obese, considered overweight and obese. I used to work for the Eastern Band in Cherokee and I was seeing seven and eight-year-old children diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. That used to be considered adult onset. We don't call it adult onset diabetes anymore because we're seeing that type of diabetes in children as young as four. And they're having to take, you know, medications and they're gonna see complications before, in their teens. So just to promote physical activity in our community, enough cannot be said about that. So again, I just want to thank you for taking this step and I hope it's the first of many to help renovate the community facilities building, those basketball courts, and those fields because it's all needed and it will be used. Thank you.
What's ironic, you know, was in '72 and '73 when that was built, we picked up rocks every day back in school.
Did you do that, Ron?
Yes, sir. Under the direction of E.J. Whitman, we picked up everything, probably. And, but that time, this is way too big. You know, this is, we'll never, it'll never, never use.
That's what we thought.
So we're at the point now where we need to, we need to move on. And you're exactly right. And thank you.
You understand, we're here. We're here. We understand.
Because I'm a voice of many, let me tell you.
We understand and we hear you and our eyes are open.
Most of us done at college.
So thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do hear you about the ball fields and you and I talked about that, talked with different, Alicia, different ones over in Seth. There is a huge need for additional ball fields and we're extremely aware of that. I'll put it that way.
Don't give up.
Yeah. Thank you for giving us the encouragement to continue with that because that is very important. Did anyone else intend to speak in the public session? That was the only three names that I had here. Okay, if not, thank you, folks, that were here for that. Next, we have adjustments and approval to the agenda. This will be the time when any member can ask to strike for adding to the agenda. Does anyone have anything to add to the agenda?
No, I think we have some more.
Yeah, I have.
Mike, can you bring the, I was gonna add to Jim, but he didn't have it.
I don't know. We have to have approval from the commissioners on asking for a declaration for the movement. That's all I have.
Let's put that into new business. New business, right? Make that...
I.
Is that right? 10I will be declaration. So we bring it up at that time.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add, under reports and presentations, I invite Matt Macon. Matt's a local entrepreneur, very involved with Venture Local. And so I'm inviting him to come and give us a report about what they have going on. So we'd like to add him at the beginning of the reports and presentations that we are reviewing. Matthew Macon. That's all I had, Mr. Te...
Please, Mr. Chairman, on 10, I'd like to make a 10J. I'd like to talk briefly about some signs.
Okay. 10J, we'll add that. Airport signage. Okay? Commissioner Tate? Okay. Okay, with those additions made, I have the addition of Matt Macon under reports and presentations. We have a declaration by Mr. Beal under new business and also airport signage. And I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as recommended. So motion to the second. Motion and second by the commissioners. We did that. We approve and Beal's second.
I have one more. I'm sorry. I'm recording.
In that case, I'll amend my motion.
25 months every year in this county, our action this afternoon. Every year, the county investigates in recreational programs with appropriation of the town. And the way that's been set up in years, it's an annual interlocal agreement for us to appropriate the money. Money's in the budget for Highlands, but it's also required that we have the board to approve that annual interlocal agreement. And so I feel the commissioner would like that show of interest in place of on the recreational program.
You will put that into...
I will, yes, sir.
Except that, Jack will put that into new business? Or you will put that...
Yeah, that's fine. Where do you have your business?
The county. We amended the motion and second, did discussion on the agenda. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, signify the same, I oppose. That motion passes. Under reports and presentations, we have Mr. Matt Macon, Venture Local. Matt, welcome you.
Thank you.
Matt?
No, no. Thank you, gentlemen, for giving me a chance to actually talk about Venture Local Franklin and let you know what we're doing in the area. First of all, I'm born and raised native of Franklin, Macon County, and that's something I'm proud of. I want to see it succeed and I'd be the best it can be. A brief overview of Venture Local. We're a grassroots movement of concerned citizens, folks that want to be involved that don't normally have a platform to do so. We started last November comprised of six motivated business owners and managers determined to bring some new ideas forward, to discuss them, and then to put them into action and see what we can do about it. We have hangouts once a month where we discuss these new ideas, new ways to put Franklin, Macon County on the bigger map through social media, just through sharing new ideas, like I said before, and putting them into action. We've been involved with several festivals in town. We do things, we're trying to do things a little bit fresh, new. We provide internet service for, for example, at April Fool's Trail Days. We stood out there and welcomed hikers into town and visitors alike and said, here, here's laptops, use them, welcome to our town, just as a way of saying, we're here and we're ready to have you and maybe come relocate here, who knows? Our biggest thing that we've done is Street Fest. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, happening downtown. If you haven't been yet, I'd like to invite you all to come. We've had, we've had four and our next one is October 26th. Bottom line there is to boost the local economy. To get both locals and visitors that are in town to thank shop locally, support our local business community, thank to support them before you go online, start shopping there. Our local business community is very important to us and without it, I'm not sure what much of town or community we have. And the big thing with Street Fest is merchants, cash registers were ringing, people were carrying bags, both locals and visitors alike. Met groups of ladies from Mississippi at the last one, arms full of bags, loved our town, loved what we were doing, loved the new thing. Another success story with Street Fest is we've got the downtown merchants together again. They kind of dissolved. We're kind of acting as a consultant to them to nurture them along and share new ideas with them and new ways to promote their businesses and move them forward. And the next idea, we want to move around Franklin, Highlands Road, we've been to Talk with Lupoli, shops at Riverwalk. We want to start the conversation there, too. What can we do like Street Fest over there to involve the community, involve visitors as well? Another thing we do is cash mobs. Very simple idea, very fun idea, ways to boost the local economy. And we've had three so far. We've had upwards of 30-plus citizens come. There's three rules. Commit to spending 20 bucks, meet three new people, and have fun. And that right there is an initial impact of that business. And again, that's the foundation of our local economy, I think. Doing fresh, new ideas, new things like that. I had the opportunity, one more thing, to be at the NC Rural Economic Development Centers Entrepreneurship Summit. It's a mouthful. In Asheville, I was on a board panel with representatives from Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, the bigger metropolitan areas, and there was a little Franklin right there with them. And I was representing as well Macon County. I was representing west of Asheville, basically. So it was a great opportunity to show them what we were doing, show them that we're motivated and we are here. Like I said, great exposure, Asheville Citizen Times picked up an article talking about it and was talking about Venture Local Franklin and then what we're doing here. Lastly, I just want to leave you with our vision statement, just to give you a more robust idea of what we are. Venture Local Franklin promotes positive and sustainable community advancement. As a citizens' maintain movement, we value inclusive participation, which is both action-based and outcome-focused. Venture Local Franklin strives to collaboratively strengthen the regional economy, embrace our natural resources, establish common goals, drive innovation, and nurture entrepreneurial ventures with the ultimate goal of moving Franklin forward. Thanks, gentlemen. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We appreciate it. We have 10 more like you, Franklin wouldn't have any problem. We got 25 like you, right, Matt?
That's kind of scary.
Don't y'all have 25 now, Matt?
25.
In the group?
We're fluctuated. New faces come and go and then there's a pretty strong core of about 20 or 25 folks involved.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Matt, thank you very much. Any questions to Matt while we have your next ABC at the moment?
I'm tired of you. One of these folks, these young folks, if you get involved, 10 or 12 years from now, I'll be the only one left, so.
You heard that, Mr. Te...
That's the idea. Get fresh, young people involved, too.
I know I'm old, but things gotta come.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
For what you do and please keep in touch with us. I'd like to keep dialogue with you and if there's something we can do to assist you.
I appreciate it.
Can I close out a little bit? Let me have one of them go to some functions, don't we?
You said it.
Now, I'm gonna tell you one truth. Well, I've been, I've been to some, I'll tell you what, I mean, the Street Fest, the 26th.
October 26th, yeah.
Yeah.
With no budget.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Next, we have Jane Kimsey. Jane's our Director of Social Services and she's here to give you a presentation on North Carolina Fast Software Implementation Briefing.
Yes, thank you. We began implementing NC Fast, which is North Carolina Families Accessing Services Through Technology. That is a new enhanced automation system that will eventually be one application for all of our economic services, work support services. We begin next week with food nutrition services. All of our staff will be trained in the next two weeks. Western North Carolina is the last in the state to implement, which we're finding there's benefits to that. We're kind of glad of that on this side. But eventually, next fall, we'll have Medicaid brought in and time for healthcare reform, hopefully. It is a huge database that will be built. The impact, it will be wait times increase significantly. Some of the tests, it used to take 15 minutes, we've heard from the Pollock counties, have taken up to four hours because it's the bigger, the households, the more income in the households, it's more screens, it's just building a database. And Ronnie's heard it called NC Slow, but we will get there. We have a vision, we know what we will do.
That development in NC Fast first come on the horizon.
A few years ago. It's been being built for a while.
Yeah, and Jane's been there and we've all been to Raleigh together, talking about NC Fast. And it was first promoted as a program to enhance the DSS and Medicaid shipments to reach, to much quicker. It has become not much.
Not much quicker in the beginning, but we do have hope, right?
Yes, we do.
That it will be there. And I think the beauty of it will be one person comes in and they will have one person to see, they won't have to go back out in the lobby and wait to see the second person. They will be assessed for all the benefits that they may potentially be eligible for. So there is hope. But you may get complaints, you may get people upset, concerned. We pride ourselves in customer service, quick, in and out. That's not going to be happening for a while. But let's have fun. We have looked at the Pollock counties and we appreciate those that went before us and what they have found. One thing we'll have is a drop box that will be installed outside of the building so that people can just drop things off. We will collect those very quickly. We will be moving maybe to paper apps. So it sounds like you're moving to technology and backing up, but that's a way to preserve in case we can't get them processed that day. Their dates of application will be protected. There's change forms we've posted on the website with ATIs help so that people can go on that and submit changes. We're gonna have food cards for those that qualify for expedited food stamps. Food nutrition services collapsed into the old language so that we will have that if someone needs food immediately, we can get that to them if they qualify for that. someone needs food immediately, we can give that to them if they qualify for that. We are doing it with existing staff. We're looking at redirecting resources from other teams if we need to. And one of the big changes, we're not doing outposting in Highlands, Manahoa, through the winter nights. We'll reassess that in this plan. We'll need all the manpower, human resources we can get to successfully transition. But one of the biggest changes is we're outsourcing our energy programs this year. Carenet, we have contracted with them beginning November 1st to do the heating assistance programs. We asked if this might come at the same time because we use existing staff to do our energy programs. We could not manage both this year. So we have Carenet that has agreed to contract, and we will give them our energy assistance at them. And they will be...
Is that ten of them?
No, it is strictly for crisis intervention and low-income energy assistance, and it is an administration dollar with that, a small amount that they will be receiving. But we will be working and announcing with the public how that process will flow.
So, gentlemen, you're saying that's not cutting into the actual flow of money to the people?
No.
They're getting very small admin costs, basically.
Right, the admin cost that we would have gotten. We have assigned to them that they can...
And they agree to do it?
Yes, they have, which we appreciate. And they do share the work for Duke Energy as it is, so this will be just adding. So they would have all heating assistance programs will be at Carenet this year. But now the money has been cut significantly.
Yeah.
Because crisis intervention, last year we got 285,000, this year we got 128,000. And then our low-income energy assistance, two years ago, we got 466,000, and it was 10 miles solid. Last year we got 65,000, and we're hopeful to get 85 this year. We're hoping we'll build a little bit back. But that's significant cuts, the heating assistance. And last year we were fortunate, the winter wasn't flooded, it was cold. This year, farmers all the next as it will be colder. But I do, staff are, I guess, anxious to get this process underway. We've waited for a long time, and we just hope in the end that it is a better service to our community.
And instead of just saying this, it's going to watch what's going on in other counties. Since this NC FAST, we were out when it was first started, Jane and I were both there. Most counties have put on anywhere from 5 to 25 people to handle this problem. So this staff is willing to attempt to do it without adding anybody, so they can... There's a vision in North Carolina Fast that some of this money can go for administration, but if you take it out of that, it's that money to be due vote. So just thanks, Jane, to you and your staff for what you continue to do.
We appreciate that. And speaking to the staff, I think it's something you can't learn very easily. So we looked at it, and we just decided there was no way we're going to manage it returnally, but still take care of the people.
Thanks, Jane, for what you do. Great job.
You leave that, you get rather than...
Right. We're going to wait to see if we're going to charge, we'll think something.
Be safe. Bye. Now, we'd like to recognize the President, which means I'm sorry, our [inaudible] Director, Mr. Chris Dahl.
We like to call Chris Dahl Show.
Yeah. Chris has two [inaudible] status cell two, and belt and cell three, and also Mercury Product Handling Pro. So Chris will turn that over to you at this time.
Right.
Gentlemen, that should be on your screen.
Find that place. This first item, just wanted to give you all kind of an update, let you know what's going on, where we're at, let you know what we're thinking about it. And it's, I guess the front line is [inaudible]. So we're, this is just kind of a kickoff thing, just to let you all know where we are. This first graph, it's a horrible graph because it's steeper than it should be, but these are our historical waste tonnages from 1998, and you can see from this graph that, except for this funky thing on the end that I'll talk to, talk about in a minute, we have seen a general growth in our disposal rate from year to year. Although from '05 to '08, you can see it's kind of leveling off. That does large part of [inaudible] predated the recession, so we think that's just due to communities involved in our recycling program to help curb, you know, what had previously grown much faster. So based on kind of the historic data, these are the projected disposal rates for the next five years. And that, this slide is the previous slide with the, with the extra five years to tack And a word about this little, this little funky shape, the graph trends a little better if we ignore that. And there's two reasons that we can ignore that. One, there was a big, a big thing happened in 2008. We closed landfill. We stopped putting C and D somewhere. Because of some change in regulations at the state, we closed that landfill and started co-mingling all our waste into the MSW landfill in Franklin. So that's the big spike, you say. Of course, that spike was followed closely by the recession, and we didn't have any building materials to put in land, so you see it coming back now. We kind of hope that we've hit, we hope we've hit bottom, and so, again, we're going to track this out with moderate growth. Hopefully, we can sustain a lot of that growth in increased participation and inclusion in more recycling projects. But we think this is not overly conservative, but fairly conservative estimate of what we're going to see over the next five. When you talk about airspace, your tonnage, of course, is a big piece of that, but the second piece of that is, is your density, your compaction rate. How much trash can you get to hold? What you see here is, is our historic data since the landfill opened. Now, up to 2003, we just averaged those numbers and put them in there as an average. The big thing that happened in 2003 is we changed the way we were landing. We stopped bailing and started doing an open field in the landfill with a camp compactor out of the field. And again, I'm just terrible with scales on graphs, they just look horrible. So pay more attention to the dotted orange line. Can you see that's orange? That top one, the top line, the top line has been our compaction rate since '03. The bottom line, like I said, the solid room line was our compaction rate up to '03, and then this dotted blue line has been the overall compaction rate, the overall impact. You can see what we've done the last five, six years has brought that rate up a little bit. That really doesn't mean a whole lot, except my guys do a good job, and I want you to see it. So we take those two lines, and we look at compaction, and generally, our compaction rate is going to be, we think it's going to continue to get higher, but not as high as it's been previously. The main reason for that is we're up out of the hole now. We're having to build side slopes, which is a lot more dirt. You don't get the benefit of overburden, coming back with other layers that further press it down. And what's actually a good thing, but we're, you turn a lot more water away, which is what we want, but it slows decomposition down. So we think that we're not going to stay at 1,600, but we should still improve above the stories, levels. So all that goes to say is that top lead red line is how much airspace we have permitted in cell, cells one and two. That approaching, I don't know, brown line is, is how much waste we, is how much airspace we consume. Track that out five years, and those lines cross, which tells us as of May this year, we've got it in table form, as of May this year, we're looking at about 4.7 years of life remaining. Again, it may be a little bit conservative, but not a lot. With so little life left, even a big change is only going to move in a few months. So we're sitting at about five years. And so that brings us to cell three, the next step in the development of the landfill. Cell three, well, it says it there, but it's kind of an outlined section across the hill over on, over on the next ridge top of the landfill. Cell three, now it's [inaudible]. This slide was prepared by our engineers. It's basically a project schedule and how long it takes to develop a new landfill. Now, one thing, this is a little bit shorter because the landfill's already sited. It would be much, much longer if we were going to agree in space that didn't already exist on some side lanes. The two big takeaways here, the biggest one is, it is now October 2012, and if you track through, make some assumptions that the state is going to be timing and getting permits, which has never been my experience, but there's always hope. We paid them a lot of money now in permit fees to get these things back to us. So even at that, we've got about six months, you know, about six months of fluff before we reach triple mass and having to have a place to physically put garbage. But the big one, the big item I want to focus on here is that top item, and that is our hydrogeology, our hydrogeology work that has to go on over there. When the landfill was originally built, you know, we just put enough space to show it certain number of years. Before we can actually develop it, we have to put pheziometers, test wells, background wells, looking for depth of bedrock, looking for depth of water table. We have to get those in and then monitor them for an entire year. And that data has to be compiled before we can ever start with designing landfill. This is what our landfill is supposed to look like. Rock outcroppings, running into rock, depending on the soils we're running to. It could change, it could shrink, it could grow. We won't know that until this first step happens. And so that's kind of, that's kind of where we are at now, is getting moving on getting that hydrogeological work done. We have the money budgeted this year to do, to do the well installation in the first six months of testing. We also have some money, and there's some other issues that we need to look at sooner rather than later. Kind of the biggest one of those is how are we going to get over there? You can't tell from aerial, but there's really no road between cell two and cell three. So one of the things we have looked at, it's my desire, I've talked to you guys before about our recovery program and the fact that we're now recycling, 10% of the county's recycling in that one building with a couple of guys, which I think is fabulous. But it's my desire to keep traffic moving past that recovery building and not bypass that. It's also just functionally from us to be able to get our truck into the landfill. So one of the things we're looking at is trying to go either around the pond or possibly take out part of the pond to construct a road from above. I don't have to show you which building I'm talking about, but that building right there to get over there, around that concrete pad. Anyway, it's going to take some doing, just what you can't, again, can't tell from an aerial, is there's probably a 60-foot drop in elevation down to that pad and then back up to cell three. And it's going to be kind of hard to bridge that with about 30-foot space between the end of that pad.
Is cell three about the same level as base two?
It's a little bit higher.
Three's higher.
This must be building to the immediate right, so the proposed, I see...
That is, that is the county garage in [inaudible].
Okay, so that is...
That backs up the panel, though.
Okay, got it. So that's like Emery Road, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the one running kind of straight up at the edge, just like Emery.
So that's the maintenance garage. So if you come back over, if you come around, do you come back coming around the lane?
Well, we're probably talking, we're probably talking first about taking out half that pond.
Of course, and just filling it?
Yeah. I mean, y'all know, I mean, y'all may know better than me, Jack, you may know the price per gallon of water you displaced and something like that. I mean, it's not even, I mean, you know what that pond is. I mean, it's not a naturally occurring thing, so.
Oh, it looks so good, but it was there on the, on the...
One of the last remnants of the hog farm. That was pond number four. So like I said, that's just kind of one of the things we got to work out.
They're saying we can do that.
Sorry?
The pond?
No, I mean, we, I was going to say, we don't kill hogs anymore, no, we don't make the ponds. It's just, once you have a body of water, the state calls it a body of water, and they don't want you to get it.
If they're Christian, [inaudible] but they used to be about two or three of them.
There were four ponds, yeah. We got rid of two of them before it got so hard to get rid of them. That's where our recycling center sits, on ponds two and three. But that's, that's probably going to be the best route to take to get over to access cell three.
So your goal, pretty much, I understand, before, if you start the process on phase three, you will have it pretty much ready to go by 2018?
Well, '17, sometime in '17.
Okay. So when you have that ready to go, of course, if you have any room, you'll finish phase two.
Oh, yeah.
Before you ever go to phase three. You will completely close it down before you ever move to phase three?
Well, we will, we will completely close it down in terms of not clean waste anymore. Of course, there's the actual closure of the landfill, which will be going on while we're filling itself with it. And that's that engineered tab, Geo membrane.
I'm just saying, if you have the customer, when citizens come through to get to phase three, they'll be literally driving over phase two.
No, 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 no.
They're going to wander down by the [inaudible].
I'm sorry, I don't have the, this building.
That's the scale house right there. She's right here.
Pass recovery building around recycling.
So the [inaudible] get up here. That's the big... The customer will [inaudible].
And actually, you know, one of the other big benefits of this recovery building is Joe Public doesn't go to landfill. We bring them to that building and tip their garbage on the concrete floor, and we transport them. Probably would even lean heavier on that once they move to cell three.
Side of the road.
And it's out of the road. And it's not need even mud, and you're not competing with large trucks or states or a lot of accidents. So I'll take questions, but that's kind of a...
The only thing I would say, Chris, is that it takes a great deal of time to get a landfill permitted and ready for use, and so you can't really wait for you to close cell three before you start cell three.
I know.
You've got to have, what is it, now, 18 to 24 months in the first [inaudible] between to get your program modified, get your construction, get it ready to use.
The whole process will take in excess of three years. But like I said, that critical point is getting that one-year's data, because nothing else can happen until that. I mean, if we get that one-year's data...
You do that now, because pretty soon, you have to do the year, and then you have to [inaudible] and all those things, those lines of data, that's about, looks like about four years.
Right, right. Well, I mean, if we get that year and I say, "Hey, look, we, we can get, we can stay over here six more months," then, you know, we can let six months, it's going to get eaten up somewhere. But the critical thing is, we got to get that year, we got to get that data, and nothing else happens until that. I mean, we can't even, you know, I can't even tell you how many cubic yards or exactly what. I mean, you know, you know, you asked about that building, and that building, unfortunately, is in our buffer, and so that's probably going to reduce the size of that site, because we'll have to move 300 feet away from the building. So, but, but none of this is going to be known until, until this happens.
When do you anticipate starting? Do you have a question?
No, no, we've got, we'll probably think...
I'm trying to look at [inaudible].
Well, we've got another piece of paper here, so I'm going to promise. Well, we've got another piece of paper here, so I'm going to promise. 23, we'd be looking at putting in 23 wells. So we got to get, you know, we got to get that all in straight, get a company in, actually physically get them in.
What's on the first one, Chris?
If we start now, I'd love to have wells ground here.
Then how fortunate are we, Chris, to have a cell three landfill? Compared to other counties, I guess we're about one or more fortunate than any other state.
There's only a handful that are still in charge of their own waste sources.
And the cost for the other counties continue to rise because there's no limit of what they can charge.
Right. Well, you know, once you're out of the business, you kind of have.
You're at the mercy of the government.
The second contract never looks as good as the first one. And kind of also, I know, these other states, because of some actions that this state has taken, the other states are not entirely happy with us being such a large waste exporter. And so those states are now putting fees on waste coming.
I do, George.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I know this is Mercury Recovery in those fluorescent lights and the recognition here.
I want to start that.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
You get really good today.
No, sorry.
I just think this is the first time.
I'll be here. I'm going to admit something right up front. It's been a rough last couple of days, and I'm not as too dead on this one as I wish I was, but I'll try to make it make sense. Basically, mercury, or sorry, fluorescent tubes and thermostat after this waste cannot go into my landfill, except in household containers. If you attempt to bring me light bulbs, I am going to review you, and I'm going to give you the numbers and locations of some places you can take those bulbs. Those places are Asheville, Canton, and Johnson City, Tennessee. Not really great second options. And beyond that, you know, with the advent and popularity and the power company keeps sending you cases of CFLs, we're getting more and more calls from the public to manage these bulbs and manage them properly. Because of some legislation that went into effect last year, I helped the county and towns and others develop a fluorescent tube management program that we're now using at all our county facilities, and that's being managed under the maintenance department. What I am seeking to do is to start program for the recovery and recycling of all fluorescent tubes. I say mercury containing lines. It's beyond, it's fluorescent tubes, it's CFLs, UV, HID, the lamps of all fields and things like that. So it's a lot of different lines. But looking to start in our recovery building section and open area, designating it as a universal waste handling area, and manage these tubes through the vendor we already have set up, and take these tubes not only from households to keep those out of landfill, but also be able to take care of and manage commercial companies that fit this way. Just turn it into kind of a three-pronged approach. One is, I have to amend my permit. And this is why, when we started this program last year, I handed it off to maintenance. A weird set of rules. It's actually easier for somebody who's not certified and permitted as a solid waste facility to manage these tubes than it is for legal. All they have to do is have a box and a vendor and say they're billing. We have to rewrite our ops plan, write a response plan, pay a permit amendment fee. It's kind of ridiculous. But, so I didn't do it last year, but now, you know, we've moved forward. So I have a permit amendment into the state, it's under review. I think by and large, it's going to be fine. The one I did last year got approved, and this one's more refined because of extra considerations at my facility. Part two is, of course, bringing to y'all and having your authorization to start this program, which I don't really foresee any issues with that. There's kind of a part two that we'll get to in a second. And then number three, coincidentally, you know, we started talking about this, I know you all remember from probably page 17 or 18 in my three-year plan that I presented earlier in the year. We talked about where we're going to start managing fluorescent tubes. So I had been working on it for a while, got lucky, if you want to say that. The state, Deo, it's another arm of Deaner Waste Management, they had just come out with a grant cycle to encourage counties to develop these kind of programs. So it kind of worked out well, but as I was finishing my program, this came out, and so I have submitted to them. It's not a lot of dollars, but we really don't make a lot of dollars to get started. I think I have asked for $3,000 as for an enclosure, some boxes to get started with, some emergency response things that could happen. And anyway, so one thing that I don't guess we can do it ahead of time, but once I've awarded that grant, assuming everything else happens like it's supposed to, I'll just, I'll have to come back before you get your authorized receiving that money. The last part, the part that I'm really, really here to talk about and to get somebody on, is that grant will also pay for the management of household tubes, will not pay for any coverage of commercial tubes. I think I put a price list, I hope, in your package. But the bottom line is, what I'm looking to do is to charge commercial customers 75 cents per tube. Our cost for an eight-foot tube, I don't want to say wrong, I think it's 32 cents. And for HID bulbs, it goes up to 79 cents for HID, $2 for coated bulbs, broken and crushed, being handled separately. But basically, manpower, buying the containers that you have to ship these things in, storing them, boxing them, packing them, shipping them off to Johnson City, and then paying them for managing. I'm hoping the 75 cents a bulb will break. I'm trying to make this program self-sustaining, pay for itself. Not, maybe not with manpower, but, you know, we're there, we're doing this kind of work.
You don't want to make anything, just break even on the cost.
And I talked to, I talked to Bunce County, they have a similar program, but they do it under an HHW program instead of a universal waste program. They're charging 75 cents a bulb, and they're not near meeting their costs. But they have a bit more complex system than I'm looking to do, and they have, you know, 20 different spots you can take, and they have to go and get those bulbs, bring them in, so it's a lot more complicated than what I proposed to do. So I think we can, I think we can meet it at 75 cents if it turns out. Probably won't, probably won't look to change it for a couple of years, because the first year we do this, I'm going to get hammered with those. People have been saving it back for 20 years waiting for me to do this, so.
Is the T11 the same?
The, some of the bulbs, some of their bulbs have green tips, which have a reduced amount of mercury. But the state of North Carolina has taken the position that they will not accept the manufacturer's claim that these will pass, that these are not hazardous, PCLP hazardous for mercury. North Carolina says, if you want to snake that claim, you have to test everything, show us.
I just got a little rough figure. I've got about 2,200 bulbs in my little.
That's $1,650 a year.
That would cost me, if you change, you have one bulb.
If you're.
More than a bug house.
Well, it's pretty close. And which is honest to God, why I have never done this before. I looked at doing this about five years ago, and it was going to cost, it was going to cost me about a dollar and a quarter a bulb. And if I had to charge $2, I mean, you know, they would just be breaking them over my guy's head, and nobody would sit up for that. You know, you can go straight to Johnson City. This is government contract pricing. I don't know what their walking off the street pricing is.
Yeah, there's a cheaper view, Charlie, but that would go along with that.
That's true. So, I mean, the dirty little secret is, you just break them and hide them better and bring them to me and pull out my landfill. And I'd like to stop that.
Which is something for a new man.
Yes.
Well, that's a question I've been asked, I've, how do you, how do you, how do you handle that?
I'm just going to count on the goodness of our citizens to not want to put mercury into North Carolina.
Well, you give them an out, rather than break them inside the black bag.
Residential, because residential's not paying.
Eight dollars, state way.
No.
It's a danger, it's a danger. Let me ask you this, I guess, off the question, what would it cost to have a recycling machine that recovered mercury out of that compressor?
Really expensive, and you couldn't pay for it with the quantities we would be there. I mean, there's actually not even one in North Carolina. There's one in Virginia in North Carolina. Hopefully, hopefully, if enough people start doing this and we stop ignoring the problem, so maybe that will bring some infrastructure into the state. If it comes into the state, it's not going to be closer to Johnson City anyway, so, you know.
What if that's a little courage, you bulbs?
CFLs?
Those fall under the same category. Yet under the new building code, every house I build, I have to put 75,000 bulbs in the new house. That's the building code.
And.
And that, and the experience, I have to put the bulbs in the light fixtures.
And if you tear down a house, you have to remove all those.
That's right.
Quick side note, there's also the mercury thermostats, which are also an issue, except much easier to deal with because private enterprise took over and this thing didn't. We're already enrolling a program, we take those for free. If you're going to tear down a house, pull it off the wall, bring it to me. We put it in a box, ship it to a company. There's a consortium of three large manufacturers, developed this LLC that handles this recycling. We fill a box, melitum, and then melon some empty box, easiest thing in the world. So that kind of, that's the other product, but it's pretty easy to manage.
So what do you need from us, Chris?
To approve the 75% for bulbs?
75 cents, yes, sir. For commercial only, residential will be free.
That's high output, right?
Any mercury containing plant.
Any fluorescent.
Light things right here?
You just count the four bulbs, and they each act if you would clean them.
What accounting has to do with that?
Fluorescent, I mean, yeah, they're fine.
They're fine.
So residential, when we know, know cost, residential can bring them to your light bulb center?
They can bring them to the recovery building. We'll accept them, we will not charge them. And like I said, we will keep a log of what comes in, and any, I think the amount of money I asked for, the first 1,500 residential bulbs that I get, the state will reimburse me for.
75 cents is for eight-foot or R4?
Because of the limitations of our software, we pretty much have to set one number. I mean, we could set it at 25 or 30 cents, but then if you're this bulb, that's one tick, if you're this bulb, that's two ticks, an HID, that's three ticks, I mean, it's two feet.
If your cost of recovery of those bulbs, if you hear it here, what do you expect?
And I think the most, by far and away, the most common bulb is going to be eight-foot, eight-foot tick. Yeah, from commercials.
I just think the places like Lowe's, Caterpillar.
Well, a lot of those places.
I mean, I'm talking.
The good news there, most of your big retail outlets, we don't really have to deal with, they have a company that comes in, changes their bulbs, and takes them back. We really don't get that kind of bulb. It's more your, you know, your office, you know, smaller. I'm not picking on you, you can just have a smaller.
So if you, if we approve a 75 cents per bulb, and you've already admitted that that could fluctuate, if the 75 cents, after, you know, six months you won't know, maybe after a year, you'll see how it does, but is that, is it a break-even proposition, or if you're losing money?
If it's a break-even, or I'm losing slightly, I will beat the tent because I know my volumes will go down. If I, for some unutterly reason I'm making money, I will ask for.
Don't think that, I'll just be honest, don't think that a few more and more people will be breaking the rules.
Well, I mean, that's what everybody's doing now. If we keep 10 out, that was 10 we would, you know what I'm saying? Or, you know, we've got the orders to have 2,200 take back. Maybe that wasn't you.
We have seven.
But to be disposed of in the right way.
I mean, it's a danger, I mean, at one time, this was a great, this was the energy saver, you know, that you're seeing, and you see all of them promoting it now, off the old TV on the backside. How do you get that?
And like Mr. Corbin said, the bottom line is, public demand, we just can't keep ignoring that this is something that we need to manage, and we want to provide, and we want to provide ourselves. The second option is not, not good.
Not good, yeah. That's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Any question, Chris? Handling fee of 75 cents per lamp, following law, since your users are proud of it.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, and he and this, three states' motion, this is for non-residential. Any other discussion?
Well, as I was saying, I thought about it, I can't go long. I think when it's going to be eight, 50 busts of a fucking landfill next, and those please, we play out here on landfill, please, I think there should be another angle. And I appreciate permission coming up, you've done a fine job about it. I don't believe that it was better to carry it forward.
I think what you say, as I hear him, people break, it's a good angle.
That's what's happening now.
We're not only doing it on the commercial side, we're probably doing it on the residential side, too.
But what I'm saying is, our charge, and that's what's going to happen.
Not for residential.
Residential, I know. We've ruled out that Lowe's, and Caterpillar, and all these kind of people out here have somebody coming in, changing their bulbs, and leaving them. We've got small businesses, just have, we're not the best, but we're making it, and they take shortcuts, and in reality, it is. I wish, I think.
I'm just saying they're taking that shortcut now. Whether you charge them or whether you don't, they're taking the shortcut.
So what, realistically, what's the partial, where they do with this, where they go with that? Are they hauling them out to the.
We put them in the dump, we put them in the.
When they have, we reject them, and they can come back without a seat. And that's what's happened. I know of nobody that's ever made the trip that I've told them they would need to make to deal with these problems. And people want to, I mean, in all honesty, people want to do what I think, I just want to get them out.
I think, I mean, this is my opinion, I think if we advertise and let people know that we take them for free, I think they would obviously turn to me. And that's my filter. I'm like the states, too. I mean, if I was looking.
Absolutely, if we were taking free, it would work a whole lot better, we would have a much higher capture.
Yeah. For this world, coming at us just right here, we pay, all pay landfill fees. I pay landfill fees about 30 times. You say, how do I do that? You don't see them. They rent houses, that they like, get that new house out of there. So I know that I pay landfill fees for this, and I made a few adjustments at that point, you know. But I'm just thankful to keep, keep clear of that. I've had a lot of people talk to me about the mercury, and I feel like we put charge on them. It's my opinion, they can be pretty trying to bust and hide them from the middle. Well, I just got a little more confident, people doing the right thing, including myself. I just got a little more confident that if you get educated, the only thing that I've, you know, I usually give a timeframe, you know, since at this point in time, you will be charged 75 cents for that. The only thing I would suggest, you know, is that, you know, that beginning at the you know, that beginning at the first of November, December, first of January, at that time, I think there should be a leak time.
I can't disagree with you.
To notify these.
Well, now, again, this is not going to start tomorrow. I mean, I haven't gotten my permit approved.
When do you think it'll start?
First of year? Best case scenario, first of year.
I think, I agree with you.
Give people, give people. They give them a little leak time to get some fire, to know what's coming, including myself.
As much as I'd like for Chris to not charge for any of this stuff, the simple fact is it's an enterprise fund. The charge is zero, and money's going to come from somewhere.
What, I hear Mr. Tabor saying though, we added, oh, you don't want to do this, you've got to have, you've got to have some income to pay for it. So we could add. You're saying either that and make the landfill fee?
Two of us. Now, I'm going to.
No, not the place, not the.
The way I feel about this.
Yeah, yeah, you could change that decision. The only problem is, there's a, and I'm not even trying to counterpoint you here, but I don't like it. I, I, I'm reluctant to throw an umbrella fee over something that has a specific set of users. Now, the landfill fee, that's the host fee, developability fee, that is, you know, that is to have access to everybody in the county. But when you use it in a particular function of ours, we try to keep that, but those costs out of that fee. For instance, at our transfer, at our transfer facility, we charge a transfer fee. Because business in Highlands can bring their trash to this landfill where it goes, or we will bring it for you. But if we bring it for you, you're going to pay your piece of the hall bill. And it's, it's directly between the user, and we don't add anything to it. They just get a percentage of what, twenty times load cost.
I would leave those extras in your plaque, please.
White paper, yes.
And for anybody else who don't understand what I'm fixing to give you sample about, when you go buy the clients, you're charged a fee upfront, the disposal fee, that's black. All right. I believe you, both fire for the goose and fire for the ant. You just said that you're not going to charge residential fee for nothing this year. Right on the other hand, it's going to cost us a bit, right? One thing wrong with this fee upfront, I mean, the other way of looking at it, if you put on them light bulbs, start with, if you said it for it, and you know what you're going to say, you're going to say, that has to be done state level.
I would imagine so. I don't think we could impose such a, such an upfront fee.
It is.
To be honest.
I, I can't feel like this, this is a small business. I can't feel like this fire today is a state right there.
All questions, sir? All in favor of the motion to approve the seventy-five cents for commercial users indicating to say no?
No.
Close?
Please.
Now, motion passed. All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, sir.
Under old business, we have none. Under the new business, we have the leads online program. Sheriff Robbie Hoppe.
Evening.
Hello.
These are the tickets that we retrieve when we deal with the stuff that we're going to be talking about. Basically, what I'm doing tonight is talking to you about a, about a program that we're wanting to, or we're planning to implement within the sheriff's office, and also talking to you all about the possibility of in the future of adopting an ordinance, an ordinance for, for the county, which is a terrible word, I know, but let me explain. Already in place, this is, this has to do with precious metals, cashbers, scrap metal, pawn shops, and things like that. And first of all, let me apologize to some of the commissioners. Generally, I get up with you prior to now to explain a little bit about what's going on. So some of you, like Coach Cavers and Kevin or Port, totally, Jimmy Tabor, totally in the dark about what I've said, other than what you receive by email through the county. I've just been busy to have a chance to do that. So I'm here tonight to explain it to you. Any questions you have? Basically, what we're trying to do is, when, when somebody pawns things or takes metals, there's already documentation that by law has to be submitted. And then my investigators or my designated through the sheriff's office collects that information from each of the different facilities, different businesses. And what we're wanting to do is go to what's called leads online, where this is a central location, that all this data is entered through the computer system. Each business would be required to, to enter the same information that they're already entering right now on, on paper. They would just be required to implement it and, and put it in to a form through their computer system. As soon as we pay for the, and I think it's twenty-eight or twenty-nine hundred dollars for us to be a part of this program, NC Lead, Leads Online, they, they provide the software for, free of charge for the business to install into their computer system. So they're able to enter that system, enter everything into that system. And then everything that's entered, the only persons that have access to that is, one, the business owner, and nobody else out in the business field. So nobody knows what A's doing or the B. And the only other people are law enforcement. And it also allows us nationwide to be able to, or in the southeast, which other areas we're in, to be able to determine where things came from. For instance, when we had a thirty-day trial basis of leads online, we had some church break-ins. And we were able to discover who was the suspect in that. We were able to retrieve some of the items, and we were able to convict the individual who broke into churches here in Macon County, and over the weekend drove to Vanita Springs, Florida, and pawned it into a pawn shop. And we were able to go down to Vanita Springs, Florida, get that, get those materials because of NC Leads Online, and bring it back to Macon County, and we were able to successfully prosecute that, and also saw some other DNEs. I'm sort of jumping around here. If, what I passed around, for instance, that, that we collect from the different pawn shops, and as you can see, it's hard to read those things. Well, we pay, we pay tax dollars through our wages to pay one of my employees to enter all that information into the computer system. The amount will be amount, what it's going to cost us to have this program, Leads Online. And it's going to save us money there. And then the person that's entering the information at the business, that, that, as I said, they're already entering the information on paper. And some of them are already entering it onto a computer system. But this will be a central, central location. And one of the biggest companies here locally, I had a meeting with today, and they're all on board. They're, they're supportive of it, and interested to see, to see what goes on. I wanted to sort of see what some of the other businesses were. I can't tell you how all of them feel, to be honest with you. I don't know. And after tonight, I plan on going, because I know we're not going to be there to do anything tonight as far as an ordinance, but I'm going to go back and talk to some of those other businesses and see what they're feeling. They're already entering that information. They're already required by law to document, for us to be able to retrieve. We're just asking that it go into a central location so that we're able to utilize it.
Can be those same laws that require we keep those records, if I'm not mistaken, did all of them specifically authorize the county to acquire, that it be kept digitally or electronically and to transmit it. That's what he's asking, if there was a requirement.
Correct.
Sheriff, what's the overall policy of this process?
Uh, I believe it's twenty-eight or twenty-nine hundred dollars is what our charge is. It's not an upfront, it's each year that's over.
That's, that's what I'm asking, some research.
Which we're paying double that now by having an employee that gets all the different businesses and has to enter all that that you're trying to read, because I know most of you can't read it, and have to enter it through the computer system.
Just from your research, yeah, just from your research, is this, is there other, that advice is out there to do this, or is this the primary one you use?
This is the one that's most recommended and that we've had success with. And in fact, the, the city of Franklin, new police chief was our, is our contact person for references from Leads Online. They, they're already involved, several agencies in North Carolina already. Hendersonville is one of them. And he was a captain there. And they're piggybacking, they're jumping and supporting us in doing this, because as soon as we're done doing this, they're going to do the same thing in the town. They're going to, they're going to go to their board and ask the same thing.
So is the key to this, Sheriff, if, when this ordinance goes into place, it will require every pawn shop in Macon County to own the business. What about those pawn shops that don't have this available, like, do you know if Jackson County, Swayne County, any of the other, real close by that they'd be going to pawn shops?
Oh, they already do that. I mean, they're, they're already going to other pawn shops. I'm not sure if Jackson County has Leads Online, do they? They do have it?
It's already in place on the market.
But.
I've got a few requests about the law here too. If some, which the field is testing, I sort of think that there might be a certain, that there's a big possibility of, of, on here, figuring around.
Absolutely.
Name what, and that could be, it could help. Another question I had on this right here, you said thirty thousand dollars, so are you asking?
I'm not asking for anything.
Well, the reason it's asked is something you don't know.
Uh, we already know.
I'm going to tell you something, as I talked to you today about this, in my opinion, anything we can give a two to soft terms, I think is a good thing. It's my opinion only there. The way he's explaining it, to make that, look like this.
I think this can be a crime of eviction as well. I think once the word gets out that there's a computer that part, running that stuff back to people, I think it may well.
Those counties that don't have it, I promise you, and I can't promise you, I don't know for sure, but I can, I can say that there's a good possibility these other counties will go to it too. It's just, it's just expanding. And when they start hearing results, they start hearing about other counties. You know, we first heard about it because Hendersonville had it. That's how I heard about it. And then that's when we started checking into it. And other counties will do the same thing.
Sheriff, having, having had recent experience with the judicial system, there's no doubt, particularly in the metal trade, that there's just an awful lot of, this disappears and it winds up in some metal yard, and this would certainly, there, there's no question this would happen. My only hesitancy, and it really is my only hesitancy, and I would love to hear what they have to say, is I, I don't want to drop out of the sky a major expense. It doesn't sound like it is, but, but I, I have to know a little bit more about what some of the businesses will experience if you drop this on out of the sky. I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a good deal for them. I, I think it's going to be a good deal for everybody. But I'd sure like to get some feedback from some of those folks, like, like you just mentioned, to see how it's going to sit with, with them. I, I think if they, they really think about it, like you say, they're already manually keeping this stuff anyway they're required to. The question is, what would they have to, how much money would they have to spend? What expenses would be involved? Obviously, the software's provided, but if I'm all manual, and I hate computers, now all of a sudden I got to go out and buy a computer because I'm mandated to do this, that may be money I would have. And, and I just, I, I, I like the program. I think what you've got there and what you're selling is really good. My only concern is that, you know, what have we got out there, who have we got out there that this may work hardship on, is there other ways of smoothing that up?
Right.
Because I think at the end of the day, I agree.
I heard that at the end of the day, this is a good tool.
But I don't want, I don't want to drop a requirement on somebody that's going to cost them money that they may not have right now to meet that requirement. See what I'm saying? That's where.
But ask me better than having employees, just have time to fill out.
Absolutely. I mean, I can make all those arguments, and I'm not sitting out there running a business on paper either. And, and if I'm sitting out there running a business solely on paper, I am concerned when that, when that ordinance comes down from the county and says, oh, by the way, you got to go get yourself a computer, learn how to use it. You see where I'm getting, see where I'm coming from? I'm not sure, I'm, I may be making a problem with ordinance, and, and I certainly don't want to do that.
Are most of these places computerized now?
Um, I, if I told you yes, if I told you yes.
I see the head shaking out there, that's what I wanted to say, yeah.
If I told you yes, I don't think I'm totally honest, because I haven't met with all those people. So, so I don't know. Have you met with every one of them in the county?
Most of the pawn shops are all computerized. There's only one that, the ones that you've got in your hands right now.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about wouldn't affect just pawn shops.
No, but the other ones, the other businesses, the metal places.
That's the ones I'm concerned about.
There's only two that major ones, and I've, so far, they're for everything. I think we can work with them and get in the computer system and get them set up if they have any complications. Leads Online will work with them too. There's a possibility, they might supply a computer. I don't, I'm not.
Well, understand, I, after what I saw in the last year, I, I think this is a great idea. I just want to make sure we do the education process with the, with the people who's, who it's going to affect. We'll make sure we do a good job of that and don't just drop this on out of the blue and they go, oh, wait a minute. I guess what I'm saying is, while I want to do it, I, I wish we could slow down just a little bit, make sure we get, we get the rough edges nailed down with the businesses, to make sure that they understand what we're doing and how, and how easy it will be actually for them to accomplish it, and then, and then go ahead with it. I, I will support, I mean, I can support.
I'll say, I'll save you a little bit of heartburn there.
Okay.
I'll save you a little, because we're not asking to, to implement an ordinance tonight.
And I appreciate.
In fact, what we're going to do, and we talked about it in the hall, I'm going to go to these businesses, we're going to go to them and ask them to voluntarily do it anyway. But if we have some resistance and we see a need in it, then we're going to look for that need to make sure that it, it meets the.
Well, I think even if you don't have any resistance, if you don't have any resistance, then I think we need to come back and do it, so that resistance can't, can't build.
Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong on this. If I went to Athens over the weekend, you go by the, or just flea market.
Right.
If I, if somebody has stole something I took, I have them registered. They take them, it's flea market. They usually end up at the pawn shop. That serial number would follow that too.
If somebody, if somebody else in North Carolina, Georgia, Arizona, whoever is on in, is on Leads Online, keep on the bus, Leads Online, as soon as they enter it into their computer system and they enter that serial number, it sends a national crime information.
Because you know that's what happens, I'm still at these flea markets. Flea markets are taken in the pawn chart. As long as my tools got that.
As long as they got that.
That serial number will, will follow. You might, you might not catch them, that way you get.
You get, you get them stuck.
Well, you're going to catch them too, generally, because they have to provide their ID. When they, even though they're going to the county, they'll, they'll provide their ID, they have to provide their ID, and we make it, we just solve a bunch of DNEs, and we'll solve a whole bunch more, because we got a lot of stolen material that we don't want to lose to yet, those houses and not.
You know, I'm not trying to be a drag on the sheriff, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that, that the implementation goes away.
But, for example, a twelve thousand dollar tractor in Burningtown, just, I believe it was in Burningtown, was taken down in Georgia, taken for scrap metal. And they got, this kid's got five hundred dollars for a twelve thousand dollar tractor, and we were taking the tractor.
What do you need from this program? Just our agreement to go ahead and proceed?
Support us going ahead and getting involved in the program.
If you don't need us.
If you don't need the ordinance now.
No, we got it. I prepared a proposal ordinance that you could pass tonight, but what I'm hearing him say is he wants to.
Why don't we look at this on the old business and revisit that?
I was under the assumption that we, and I apologize, but I was under the assumption that we couldn't do an ordinance tonight, because I thought there had to be an uphearing on it and everything.
We can do it, but I, I for one, I would have the rest of the team. If I for one would like to give you that opportunity to do that, I'd like to plug in with you.
I think, I think the majority of you would.
I'd like to plug in with you too, what you found out.
Yeah.
What you're aiming for is a consensus from this board that we're in support, you'll come back and, you'll take the consensus, we'll do it.
I think you've got that, so.
Yes, sir.
Come back, won't you come back in a month, sixty days?
I'll have, I'll have it by next month. So report back to you all.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Sheriff. I like for.
You leaving now, if you're willing.
I'm thinking about why you need some.
We call the short three cents.
Oh, this is nervous. Can I collect these back so I don't get lost?
By the way, these are my DVDs.
Do you understand I'm reading this stuff? It's like reading the doctors.
This is five inch. Let me ask you this. This wasn't something, I seen something on TV about a week ago.
Let me ask you this, this wasn't something, I seen something on TV about a week ago, I was, TV'd flea and I was kind of caught up in the corner, something like this, it's crime. Is this something, a crime of intention that could...
It's a national program, I, I don't know if I...
Well, it's something that I seen, and even something about yard sales in one area, that, uh, that it might be required for law, have a permit to have yard sales, and this is not something local or not something local or nationally about, or something in crime of intention.
In North Carolina, there's certain, certain of these that you have to get a permit from the sheriff's office to be able to have those. Jim Ferris just kind of got his two weeks ago. Doesn't affect October 1st?
October 1st.
Where they have to, in that way, they have to let us know that they have these businesses and get a permit.
I will, I will, it's the company's, or something. Five DVDs.
We'll, we'll stand in recess for about ten, next thing's the poll, next thing on the agenda. Coming up next. We call this meeting back in. Everybody had a good break. Uh, next thing on the agenda is, uh, is the, uh, I guess Seth, Tom Ritter, the pool house renovation project.
Good evening, I'm Tom Ritter, architect for the project. On September 4th, we invited ten local commercial licensed general contractors to bid. This is for the pool house renovation, renovation of existing structure down there. Uh, we opened bid on the 27th of September, right here in this room, and we've got four respondents of the ten that we had asked for. There, uh, we've got several no bids for lack of work, which is a great reason not to bid at the bid these things, but, uh, you'll see a bid summary included in the package that you got today. We've got bids ranging from a base bid amount of $210,000 up to $277,000. As part of a potential money savings or at least eye-opening experience, we did put in some alternates that we decided to base bid about nine days, we can do it 120 days, timing is not a real issue. We were trying to find out if that was gonna help us hers financially. Turned out that the nine versus 120 days did not make a difference to us. So, as you see on that bid summary, there were seven alternates. We decided to accept alternate number one, which was 120 days scheduled, a little over 90 days scheduled. Alternate number two was to add a roof, a wooden roof canopy structure to connect the two existing buildings to it, just a shade structure. Kind of extraneous to the project, nice to add as we cared to. Uh, that was ranged somewhere in the ballpark of $4,300 to $7,800.
You didn't accept that?
We chose not to accept that so far. Uh, alternate number three was to, originally we were gonna keep a piece of sidewalk going from the front door, straight out steps down to the existing, the existing apartment. Thinking was that that was gonna be an expensive piece of sidewalk. Uh, that turned out to be, uh, alternate number, I'm sorry, that's alternate number four, $2,300. We chose to accept that so that we will have everything cleaned and up in the front of the front door. The one I skipped, I apologize, is alternate number three. Uh, in the locker rooms, in each of the boys' and girls' locker rooms, we were allocating about 120 lockers, individual lockers per set, 120 for boys, 120 for girls. There is an island, if you will, of 60 lockers in the center of the boys' locker room and an island of 60 lockers and girls'. The whole facility is intended for out of 240 people. That basically would have given us a locker per, all right, a lot of lockers. Uh, so for a cost saving measure, there was a $4,800 savings if we deleted just that center bank of lockers. Other than the $4,800, I don't have any objections to losing it because my feeling was those lockers are still six foot four inches tall, that creates some blind spots that we really don't need. Please understand there are zero lockers in there today, 60 lockers, please, of course, is a big difference, and now that's 60 for boys and 60 for girls. So what that means is we get adjusted base bid numbers ranging from $207,500 up to $278,270. What we've done is, of the four respondents we've got, I evaluated the bids, you will see a, uh, bid evaluation form along with it, if you look through the general contractors, it shows you what they've got for each of those alternates, it shows you subcontractors. One thing to keep in mind and one thing to note there is a lot of those subcontractors are local people. You will recognize the names, you'll know who these people are, we all know who they are, we've worked with them before. To that end, what we've done is evaluated all those and, uh, checked qualifications, checked licensing requirements, and it is, at this time, it is my recommendation to accept the bid from Cop Disruption in the adjusted amount of $207,500, uh, knowing that we're gonna accept alternates one, three, and four, and not accept alternate two, five, six, and seven.
Seth, your recommendation?
I, I agree. Um, I, I do know that, that he put the time in. Um, I, I was at that pool house on, on a daily basis, um, with subs of his, so I know that he put the work in, um, and, and I'm in full agreement with, um, opposing that that he gets this project.
Mr. Chairman, on, on behalf of the Recreation Committee who I know is excited about this, and on behalf of the public who's waited a long time, like 40 years for this, uh, I would like to make the motion that we accept the cop bid for $207,000.
Say, we have a motion by Commissioner Pepper, second by Commissioner Haywood.
Sheriff, could you put in that the budget that we're coming from?
From contingency, yes, once again.
Maybe fund balance. I don't know, come to contingency, we can't...
I think it is fund balance.
Why would we do what does it come down, that's the way I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and let, let the sheriff make the decision. Funding this way requires no loan, requires no tax increase, we're using existing funds to pay for this project. Fund balance, remember.
I might say this project is long overdue.
Tom, you gonna be the, who's gonna be the overseer of the project?
I'm gonna...
Any other discussion, Dylan? All in favor, signify the same guy?
Ah.
Opposed? Show the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, Mr. Cop is here with us. I recognize him, Mr. Cop is seeing to add to what you have to say. I would say, just recognize you do, you are a local contractor, you are a Macon County resident, and we're happy...
We're excited about that. We, we are very happy that, that, that it is...
We are too, it's the same way it was when I was a kid, that need done.
It sure is.
And we'll do a fine job on it.
And it does appear that you used, uh, local setups.
I have always, all local.
And we, we couldn't demand that, but we encourage that.
And everything we can, I mean, there's some things we can't get local, but anything we can get local.
Again, I would like to appreciate too, the, the command with the, me and Don is a great, a safe to, appreciate you for everybody's work. Having, just making local people's work is okay.
We look forward to seeing it.
Look forward to it. We need to work, we need to come out and help.
Yes. A lot of wheeling, a little workout, that's, getting rid of those flares and light bulbs quickly.
Ain't got long.
We all work though, we need to go to school.
Well, you have to get started. Now, the second item would be the award for the pool renovation project, recognize Seth as...
Yes, um, now on the part two of this project, which will be the outside, the true pool renovations, um, we ended up getting, uh, three bids back, um, prices ranged from, I think, $426,000, so the low bid was $361,42. At that time, I was able to negotiate with a low bidder and, uh, and he ended up knocking, um, $21,642 off of his bid just by switching some brand names and, and changing some features in, um, in various ways. His new total came to be $338,500. That is Augusta Aquatics. And speaking of them, I, I've met with them a time or two, um, this is a small project for his, his firm, which that, that to me spoke volumes, uh, the other two, um, bidders, it was a substantial, uh, project for them, and this guy, that he said this would be the smallest job that he did this year. Um, and I, uh, along with Tammy, uh, from Aquatics, or H2 Aquatics, uh, she highly, he came, highly recommended from her to start with. Yes, uh, and, and we have checked references and, and everybody has, has had nothing but very good things to, to say about Augusta Aquatics.
This was the worst place left, kind of a job, not a lot of contractors out there who do this work, I think we got some business people who most likely aren't doing it, and they're pretty competitive.
And they were the largest of the true companies that, that happened. I went on their website and looked too, after we talked, they've been in business since 1981.
Yes.
I think it is, and then, uh, tons and tons of municipal projects, schools, universities, all those projects much larger now.
Yes. And, and they have also, um, the things that they can go locally, uh, if they need to hire a, a day's laborer, um, they've said that they will use people here, they have done local electricians, uh, to do their electrical work. So, things that they can basically sell out locally, they, uh, they've got prices and they're, they're doing that also.
So, we at the end, Seth, we got $338,500.
Yes.
Sheriff, also, this bid is not included in the county's, we'll work on the island building down early next spring, and so what we'd like to be able to do is, is amend the contract with them, and we actually, so we get this...
Cause they'll be here not continuing, they'll be here for, uh, the better part of seven or eight months.
They'll be here, and so probably, probably most likely to feel like that, uh, best part of going to the island, but we'll be the same company's already here doing it for the county, they're red card here, and so we don't have to price solid yet, because we don't, we haven't negotiated that, we try to make sure we don't forget that part of the project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want that to slip through, that, that's really important, make that kind of thing.
Chairman, you have a question? The mission to him, that we don't look at angle that...
Yes, yes, and I, I stress that, I stress that today. And he, he basically said that, that we hired the right architects, or the right engineering firm to do it, they have a very thorough set of plans, and he says that, uh, he does not see...
They know what's there.
Yes.
Well, that's probably not a firebomb, you dig, you can't guarantee...
Well, and that, that's what he said, the only thing that he can't guarantee is exactly how that, the pool wall is, is about 99.9% of them are the way that she has drawn, so, unless there was some major, or some...
Why do we decide on the fence?
The fence, we are, um, gonna go with a, a metal iron, um, fence, aluminum type, but, um, not going with channel.
That's out of different...
Yes, yeah, that'll be in, in my bucket, that's just a normal, that thing type.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Once again, I'd like to have the hundred if I might, uh, making the motion that we accept, uh, bid from Augusta Aquatics, $338,500 to be taken out of, uh, designated fund balance, and, uh, also with the, with the caveat that there will be an amendment coming down the pipe to fix the island.
Yeah, as I made, just by Sheriff, that, uh, we would be authorized to sign a contract with them, uh, provide the, provide the work performance payment.
That is called payment and, uh, and then... Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll remember my motion.
You say, Mr. Tate? Say, Mr. Tate, any discussion on the motion? What kind of schedule?
By, by proposing this tonight, they, they can do all the, the plumbing, the electrical, everything up to the point where they, they finally come in and spray the last coat, um, this fall.
Will the pool be open for next?
Absolutely. Uh, and he, he said, he said they want to, to get it to where there were three weeks of just coming in and, and doing the touch of earth. They don't want the plaster to sit over the winter, uh, without water in it. He says there's no use in, in basically killing a year's worth of time on the plaster. So they think that they can get everything done, uh, this fall up to that point, or any setback. Yes, yeah.
Not a warranty, do he, do they have? I don't want being killed, have to work over, not a warranty does the pool company work over.
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, he, there, there's so many different parts to it, um, the, the water feature...
It wouldn't matter, parts of labor for us is a year, so, uh, I just wonder what they have.
Plaster will be, uh, there'll probably be a three-year guarantee on, on the plaster side of it.
I'll pull that out.
The, the water features have, have their own, uh, and, and that's one of the, the largest aspects of this.
With the plumbing and the hookups and the freaking freings and busts, and you have to replace it, so I'd ask those questions.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of parts of things to hear.
Yeah.
You have a discussion, Dylan?
Anyway, I put, uh, I changed that, uh, motion, we include that before we go on right there.
Already did, yeah, already did.
Sorry, you have a discussion, Dylan? On table, the motion, signify the same guy?
Ah.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Augusta Pool, at the $338,500.
One other, one other part that we haven't put out the bid is, we gotta, now this is a pool itself, it's not the area around the pool that, that we're gonna have, like you, like some concrete, some of that concrete, we've been out there, we've seen it, uh, we're not sure whether it has, we haven't determined off whether it has, uh, metal in or...
No, I, I'm going and busting chunks of tomorrow.
As soon as he finds out...
It goes up the next Sunday, probably goes 18 but to your record.
Yeah, and if, if he finds out that there's no metal in that concrete out there, we'll give you the beneficial stuff, we're gonna prove it.
We can get a letter, it's totally...
I'll tell the public about that. Uh, the other thing is, we, we have a ballpark figure what's gonna cost to repair and replace all that, uh, paper out there, but we haven't put that out in bid, so we have to bring that back to those inspectors.
It's, it's roughly 250 yards.
Let me just say this, uh, when we started this discussion several months ago, uh, we had indicated, said we were gonna keep this cost between $500,000 and $600,000, my fingers are right, for the, for the bathhouse and for the pool, it's $546,000.
Yep.
The hill lights as good as that ridge was last that we...
Well, we didn't, the time they do it, I would...
It's gonna be a, uh, it, it is gonna be something that, that this county's gonna be able to be proud of, um, and it's gonna make everybody happy. Uh, they're not gonna have to go across the mountains anymore to, uh, go somewhere else to take their kids for a day's entertainment.
Seth, I appreciate a whole lot of groundwork that you've done on this, and that I seen when they were starting to set the rest of the... And you too, Commissioner Pepper, I know you've done a lot of town this...
Yeah, well, I'll give, I'll give the credit to the Red Committee and Seth and Tom, they, they were the driving force, all they needed was a little, little positive reinforcement, and I appreciate what they've done, and I appreciate the members of the community that came out and, and, and it was nice to hear them.
And we'll ask you to, as they're laying on, if you can keep a regular communication about progress out there.
Look, I guarantee we'll talk to you every Friday night.
Yeah, we will, we will.
Thank you guys.
Anything else, thank you.
We'll sign, I very much will sign.
Out of T and D, we have a release of the progress bond for Diamond Falls subdivision, uh, Matt Mason. Matt, how are you, welcome?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
Our office, um, has been requested by the developers of Diamond Falls Subdivision to come to you and I and request the release of their improvements guaranteed for phase two of Diamond Falls subdivision. Our office, we completed the final inspection of Diamond Falls subdivision. The development business is in course of development plans and is in compliance with subdivision ordinance. As per the ordinance, I've requested and received a written certificate from Mr. Larry Lackey that the improvements are properly installed and that others attached on the next page. It is my recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners will release the total amount of improvements guaranteed for phase two of Diamond Falls subdivision.
Mr. Mason, your recommendation?
It's, uh, discussed with the attorney, county attorney earlier, and for confirmation, I, I think it's, it's important to do that. Our ordinance would require that the, uh, subdivision administrator be, uh, give the authority to sign off on that, and so I don't think that Matt's taking over, he has beneficially been appointed as our subdivision...
planner, as subdivision administrator.
Motion, Beagle, second, uh, Tate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
This comes with multiple words.
Yeah.
What it's.
I didn't read that part. So, now, technically, you need to make the recommendation.
Now, I need to make the recommendation.
You're making the recommendation, so don't want to entertain a motion if we take action to.
I say I can have B and B.
That's the best management practice, is what that stands for is for basic performance.
They don't have all the paving.
They have all the paving finished that we require to be bombed. They don't have any type of subdivision.
And those upper lots are not paved.
Some of the ones, I accept for Jimmy and I, we have, uh, some are paved.
Mr. Steeple? Good. We have a motion by Commissioner Haynes to approve. You have a second? Any discussion? You have a second? Tate? All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. Matt, the letter he wrote you says Downland Falls Phase Three final inspection.
That's correct. I noticed that coming in this, I will have that corrected.
He meant to say Phase Two.
There is not a Phase.
There is no Phase. That's what I understood, that there was no Phase Three. Okay, fair enough. That's, that's.
How many choose the performance bond?
I've got it right here. You might want to make your motion subject to giving that corrective letter. So, the, the motion, subject to the correction of Phase Three and Phase Two in the letter?
That performance bond is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Any other discussion?
No, it's in, it's actually.
The insurance.
I won't be calling for a check out of home.
Careful.
Because I know we didn't have that much on the balance. Okay, good.
Again, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, man.
Yeah, I appreciate you, man.
Thank you, man. Next item on the agenda is the, let's see, Lori, capital project improvements for school and period.
Right. Our last board meeting, I believe it was, pardon, two fifteen, okay. At your last meeting, I think we kind of did the final resolution, you know, to approve the financing of one point five million. This is just a formality. Since we're borrowing, we borrowed the one point five million, we have to establish an account to run the money through, so to speak. And so, that's all this is doing. Since, you know, the school system hasn't informed us that it will take them approximately two years to spend the money, that's why I'm establishing a capital project. That way, if we don't have to come back and reappropriate, it just carries forward until it comes to pay.
Okay. So, this will be a vote to establish an account for this.
Exactly. Yeah, to approve this ordinance before you, which will establish the revenue and money coming in, which is all the, which is.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the finance director's record of the day.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Chester.
I could come back just a moment to the subdivision improvement bond that we were just discussing. For clarification purposes, I thought I heard Matt say the bond was gonna be in the one hundred.
I need to bring clarification, that that actual bond that's to be released is in the
original amount, two fifteen, four eighty-eight. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
We release this entirety.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. And Lori, we have the acceptance of the grant, the capital project George, team monitoring trust fund.
Right. As you're all aware, we have the Macon County Soil and Water Conservation, which I consider a part of the county, and I guess that's, I think that's not, kind of, maybe been both ways.
More like a part.
More like the county. They have their revenue to the county. So, a couple of years ago, actually, this grant goes back to two thousand and eight. The Soil and Water under federal ID number applied for this grant, and they were using our C and D with the U.S. Natural, sorry, yeah, the Resource Conservation and Development Fund. They were administering the grant, which means that they would be fronting money, so to speak, and then request reimbursement for Clean Water. Well, to want to understand from Doug Johnson at Soil and Water, their funding has been deducted essentially. They don't have the funds to be able to front the money and ask, you know, their way on reimbursement. So, they came to me, I think they talked to Jack and talked to me, and they're just asking, and we've been, you know, had several conversations with Kevin here at Clean Water, for the county to accept that grant, you know, under our federal ID number, which means there's ordinance attached as well, you know, for this, that we have to legally appropriate the funds to, again, the county would be kind of fiscal agent. You know, we're, as Doug and Mike go out and, you know, procure the various things they want to do with this grant, then the county would pay the bills, and then the county would ask for reimbursement from Clean Water and for Trust Fund.
They're actually making more work to you.
A little bit. I mean, Doug, Doug administratively will handle it all. If there's a quarterly reports, annual reports, there will be a few checks.
But there's no match, it's just.
Like, there's no county match, you know.
How would that show them, the budget? That would show as money.
It's gonna show as a capital.
As expenditure, as capital expense.
Capital project.
Should show a capital project.
Yeah, cash in, cash out. Yeah, you'll show the grant, which is the revenue coming in, four hundred and twelve thousand, two sixty-nine, and you would show the expenditure going out. So, it's, again, no county money involved.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Like, so just a little bit of extra work on finance, but it's, you know.
It's a little.
It is a mold of your personal.
Right, it's probably gonna be more, that's why I'm telling.
Any reimbursement at all of this bunch here to the county for, thanks for what you've been doing, administrating down?
I don't think so. We'd have to ask Doug or Mike, I don't think there would be typically in my.
Those bones are very specific.
Yeah.
Those are very specific of what.
I think that's the problem that they were up against, is they lost what had been their industry until, and their deep industry until, they don't have anything to do with it.
They don't have anything to do.
They were cut, yeah. They were cut for the last two years.
So, if there is any administrative vote not in there, it's gonna be used to go around the circle that we're at.
Yeah.
There you go. Good answer.
But I think you guys, you know, would agree that it's a good thing, you know, it's putting hopefully local people to work, you know, when we go out here and contract to restore, you know, it's protected, you know, a little Tennessee, you know, really nice, so it's a good.
I'd like a motion.
Got a motion in the second, uh, second, Mr. Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My vote, I think you're passionate, Steve. Sorry.
Thank you.
Second motion. We also have item G, request for release of sewer easement for Jeffrey Min, Brendan Boatright. I've talked to his family about this, I know from the West Bay half, Jack Hilk, the.
Is it, we discussed this, or discussed this sometime back, another issue that came up, and since that's not the location where the sewer line is going, and it's pretty high up there probably, we're asking to be released, just the way you did one last month, so taking off there in the way that Chester, Chester's done that, it's really good indeed. And so, we're asking the board, because we went back, talked to the board, it already passed that, we didn't find a reference, yes. We looked at it, decided to be safe, and go ahead, make sure y'all make some action now, so we can go ahead and process it the same way that the last one was looking like this, but we have no need of the ordinance, especially not certain property, and not likely to be able to use it in our lifetime.
I understand, my recommendation would be.
That's what I'm saying, I think we'd make, folks, and everybody else, a little bit of history lesson, Mr. Chairman. Like, I was always on the board when it started with the county manager. We went out and secured dates. The county manager, I said, first, I worked on this one, and, and a lot of others, so I would certainly, if, you know, they were protected. So, we would certainly release this back to the, to the.
Chairman, I'm prepared, a proposed resolution to clear that particular easement surface and to, to basically ban all the, signature of a quick claim deed of the county to these individuals, I think should be appropriate to pass that.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the resolution, authorize the quick claim deed of individual sanitary sewer easement concerning Jeffrey Dale Boatright and Evans and Seabody West Park, which is.
Very good.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Any consideration of next assignment from the planning board? Commissioner Tate?
The planning board is moving along very efficiently, I guess you might say, on the subdivision ordinance, the review of it, and coming to some common terms on some new suggestions, maybe some changes, and I think Chester's been working on it a little bit. I thought it would be done by now, but now they've put a couple of roadblocks in there, they're kind of working their way through them, but overall, they're pushing the progress for that. Commissioner Hayes can probably more immediately. I was just gonna make the recommendation that when they do finish it, that we might go ahead and put a plug in their mind of what they might be working on next. I think I heard Matt Mason speak about it at one of our last meetings. I would recommend that we give them a design, a high impact notice, to review that. I don't want them to review it now until the subdivision ordinance is complete, but I want, thanks about February to go to that. Just to get y'all's feedback.
That sign order just goes back, Jimmy, before you came, before Kevin came, and we've talked about it for, and the planning board just haven't had the opportunity to work on it, so we all agree that it very, that it really needs to be looked at.
I'm fine with that. Is that, considering you've had that, and look at the sign orders, do you review that?
Follow and review it.
And then, do we want to say, do we want to say we'll review the high impact notice or your recommendation wait?
So, let's wait on that.
The sign orders is not as easy as you might think when you get into, but how it's written, we'll struggle with it.
I think so. I think that's Jeff and I probably did it, just wanted to add it here briefly, too.
I'll, I'll transfer that. Chester, simply, we sort of agreed first year that we would be giving a sign, planning over, would be recommendation, we vote on this, so it's a mix, show.
I would get it in.
I think it is, we're getting it in.
That's my recommendation.
It's our priority.
I'd like to.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Make the motion that the next task, the plan, is after completion of subdivision, we get the gene.
Only caveat, I figured out that this time is, it makes the Chester Jones and asked him that he would be an integral part as we get this thing where it's not only fire with attorney, but where it's enforceable. If you want to have.
Sign.
Yes.
You have to.
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously. Let me say thank you, Mr. Tate, for your, your work and, and.
Well, then there were.
But we appreciate your involvement there. That was, when we came on board, when I came on board, that was a, let's just say, that was a contention of many issues that subsided, and I thank a lot of people for being involved and, and making it a little more efficient. We've got some wonderful people on there. Appreciate the job that our, our liaison took to have.
Well, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Tate, and I was just filling in that there. And I enjoy going on families, working on food, but.
They're good, and that's the radar. And a year ago, they were in C and D, right?
No problem.
Hey, I was the declaration, I think, Commissioner Beal, you had that? Declaration of the cancer.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, this is a cancer that has affected probably everyone in this room, but sometimes some family member. And so, we have a request, and I'd certainly ask for support on, and this is to declare November as pancreatic cancer month in Macon County. It is nicely recognized as pancreatic cancer month, nicely, and we'd like to recognize it in Macon County. As you see, breast cancer month, the official color is pink, if you go out there and play football games, you saw that. Pancreatic cancer, official color is purple. Pancreatic cancer is the fourth largest cancer field to get its eleven to fund it, which serves. If you talk to people, it's very cancerous, you can tell you that one of the ones that's gotten cancered, and I think we must make a concern that it's related to wireless. Suppose we know on this or battle it right now, we've all known somebody that's battled this. We just lost, you recognize one tonight, we've lost a pancreatic cancer, and we have another county employee that's battled it, so. Pancreatic cancer is very, very difficult, because once it's diagnosed, unfortunately, it's usually progressed to a very dangerous state. So, I think this is another thing that I think if you have the health department involved, and I'd like to make that recommendation to a motion that we have the county manager, who is the best I've ever known, writing resolutions, to have a resolution ready at our November meeting declaring November as pancreatic cancer wireless month.
Chester, we have a second. That motion? If we have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item J, this is an item coming from the Air Force Authority, Commissioner Cutler.
Yeah, when the Air Force Authority met the other day, and, and they had a desire, they're always working, they're always working to try to make the place look better and more presentable, for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is, when you fly into Macon County, when the governor flew in, not long ago, Bill Harris, and get off the plane, you don't really know where you are, because there's no sign on the runway sign that tells you where you landed. And so, they wanted to put some signs up, you see the estimates in front of you. Air Force Authority originally asked me if I could, if I would, if I would ask you for the whole twenty-nine sixteen, and I said, no, I believe, not to people, we ought to go halves on it. It would cost one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and six cents if you want to go straight down the line. I would think we could round that to something like fourteen fifty-eight, let them pick up the eleven cents. But I would ask you, they are, as you know, we keep their budget very low every year. We don't give them any work that they can absolutely use. While we do get some money from the sale of few.
it gets home, hits the workforce, and, uh, so, you know, I, I think that we could, we could recognize a different one every month, but I think this one needs some special attention, because it's getting home, hit some families in Macon County recently, and affected, uh.
And it is national.
And hits a national, pancreatic cancer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Uh, item J, uh, this is an item coming from the, uh, from Airport Authority, Commissioner Cuthbert.
I'm on Airport Forty net the other day, and, and, uh, they, they have a desire, they're, they're always working, they're always working to try to make the place look better and, and more presentable, uh, for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is, when you fly into Macon County, when the governor flew in not long ago to build the Harrah's, and get off the plane, you don't really know where you are, because there's no sign on the runway side that tells you where you landed. Uh, and so, uh, they, they wanted to put some signs up, you see the estimates in front here, uh, Airport Authority originally asked me if I could, if I would, if I would ask you for the whole 2916, and I said, no, I believe, not believe, we ought to go halves on it. Uh, it would cost $1,458.06 if you want to go straight down the line, uh, I would think we could round that to something like 1458, let them pick up the 11 cents. Uh, but I would ask you, uh, they are, as, as you know, we, we keep their budget very low every year, uh, we don't give them any work, and they can absolutely use, uh, while we do get some money from the sale of fuels and things like that, uh, they have asked our help, and I, and I, and I believe we'll give it to them, there'd be a sign on the airport, on the runway side, there'll be a sign out in front of the, of the airport, on the parking lot side, and a third sign on the road, uh, and that's, that's where those three signs will be.
So all those signs will be made out of?
Well, mega bond, is it say?
Mega bond.
It's a synthetic, uh, here, and the, I think, Commissioner Cuthbert, you attached the copies and pictures.
Yeah, the picture is there, there's the logo, you'll see it if you flip it over.
This is one with door, there's a right.
Yes, yes.
The welcome to.
Welcome to Macon County, that's correct. Welcome to Macon County will go on the, where people, on the, on the runway side.
Right.
The other two that just say Macon County Airport will go in front of the building one. Welcome to will be on the airport side, in fact, we're looking at the possibility of even mounting on to the building itself, uh, so that, so they tax it down, and they come in to let your passengers off, first thing they'll see is welcome to Macon County.
Well, that kid, if it has grown suddenly, then you can definitely read it, because he talks about that.
Yeah.
So this here is, uh, biographical, something similar to one of these big, like, out here in the legislature, so, I mean, there's something similar to that.
Hell, no, no, I think it's the same as.
No, this, this is premium gray.
Premium gray biograph.
It's a little bit.
That stuff, that stuff we put up on the side of the road is just corrugated, coated.
But it's saying out here that it's, it says it's premium gray graph, but it's still cut by, you know, six or seven.
And that, that is, of course, your copies here are black and white, but that is, I think, black, black silver, uh, red and gold.
They are colored, you're, we didn't have colored copies, so we got black and white.
And this price includes their installation.
It's also installation.
And this is installed, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, that.
It includes installation. Turnkey operation.
This is local company.
Right. It's turnkey operation for 1,458. I would recommend, and, uh, if you're interested in that.
I can actually get you the cheaper than that, 1,388. The sales tax would flow through about a cheap account because you get refunded.
Oh.
So just the subtotal.
So 1,388.
Yeah, the subtotal of that, I'll tell you, is 1388. So what you're wanting to do is increase the airport's operating budget by 1388.
Right, that, that would be the easiest way to do it, and they can take it from there.
Mr. Chairman, this is always something that enhances the airport, and as it be getting used more and more, we've seen to the extent, I think it's a, it's a good investment if we work with the Airport Authority, so I make the motion to approve, uh, Lori's suggested price.
1388.
1388.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
I'm just, I've no hard feelings, I just feel like it's too much of a concern, so I got to make.
All right. And, uh, please, Jim. No, Jack, Jack, you got that.
This is an annual, an annual, and local agreement, and, uh, actually approve about four weeks here, we always budget, we budget, that's what we're trying to find five dollars for, 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 for town, uh, facilities, and, uh, it's not guaranteed, and all this we have spent in local agreement, that's such appropriation each year, money is in the budget, but the local agreement needs to be approved by four, four weeks at least.
Okay, so you're asking us to approve the, uh?
We're asking the board to go ahead and approve the, uh, appropriate for this fiscal year for the Highland appropriation for our tree.
This has been in place for, for a number of years, probably this is the fifth year with management.
It was, uh, actually, actually played before I came, uh, and twelve.
Yeah, probably six or seven years, unless we, the numbers have changed a little bit, but it's worked well, with your tape, with the, with the balance.
That's our reflection. I'm not sure. I believe the Town of Holland is talking this up, and that's not, uh, just, they have 35,500.
Oh, I see a typo there, very much, uh, page three, paragraph four there, it says, not to exceed $500,000, but in parentheses, 495, it should say, not to exceed 495,000.
It's the original appropriation.
Just 500,000. I think they were trying to give us an opportunity to raise that.
To raise it back.
There was this, there was this commissioner one time that asked for a 1% cut, now she got it, ever since it all numbers.
Look, we need to correct that.
We need to correct that to 495, 495 is what we have left.
Thank you, Chester.
He's rubbing off on me, he's sitting in there deciding.
Thank you, Chester.
You don't mind that, do you, Chester?
Okay, uh. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, so that we give away the, the, the sign.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Now the consent agenda, uh, gentlemen, there's the minutes of the September 11th, 24th, which you've got in your packet, legend number 4138, which you have, uh, a tax basis, uh, for the taxes.
They were, yeah, they were.
And must they add more tax, but we can, we can prove that all before the motion, if you're satisfied.
For the voluntary and visitor grant, did they revise that up or down?
Uh, voluntary, yeah.
Sure.
That, that RAP stands for revenue, sorry.
Oh, revenue, so that's.
Yeah, that is a brand new grant they received.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's a totally new grant.
And you said they must have had. Wonderful quote. Gentlemen, I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second, Commissioner Tate, uh, any discussion?
Have you heard anything, Mr. Manager, about, since we, since we made, the House has ordered what delivery date they gave, you know, to give them the delivery date?
They haven't given us the specific date yet, which, you know, they've got up to nine days. We have to check, we're just starting to process, they don't even start doing things until they've got a contract in place, so we're going to ask them to do, to speed up the cost of the condition of our plates again.
We need to.
We had five, we had five now one time, so we're going to do everything we can to get down to the front street, speed it up, or out, or down, some quality, product, and whatever, but, um, we, we could use all of the time now, we have.
Okay, thank you. There, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify a saying aye.
Aye.
Number 12 is appointments, gentlemen, you have in your, uh, agenda, uh, Town Franklin Planning Board, Board of Justice, we have recommendations, Franklin Plan, Derek Rowan, request the vote, the vote that the board consider two appointments, you can see those, the Town Director, Jim Green, be reappointed for a two-year term, and Mr. Ken Stonebreaker can be reappointed as an alternate for a three-year term. Any questions regarding that?
Yes, sir. Who always, you know, I mean, by that, so, so.
The town.
It's kind of.
If you remember. Any questions about that? The just recommendations or a motion over this?
Say.
I've got a motion, second, through Jim Green and Ken Stone.
As, as listed.
Any discussion about this?
I guess everybody saw the new sign for, uh, Airport City, it's really looking.
It's another segment for another day, but I think we need to consider something about the recognition for, uh, people's park, the store's been there since 1957.
It's still great, just like it did in the last five years.
And that, uh, that store, that family's been a lot for the community in Newtown, and many, uh, donations they've given, religious football, I don't know how many donations they've given, they have church fundraisers, and on, and on, and on, so we need, I think we need to think about that, this is going to, sometime around the first year, I understand, we need to think about.
January 15th.
Sometime recognition.
JC had just come out of the military.
Fifty seven.
Had a father from Joe Asher, correct?
Joe Asher. And that, that can't agree with Jason Jake. Anyway, all in favor of two, uh, before you signify a saying aye?
Aye.
The motion passes, and, uh. Normally, normally a public board doesn't recognize private business, that, that often, and the private business has been in this for 60 years, and a vital memory of, of downtown the county.
Those, those, oh, yeah.
We need, Jack, we need to be talking.
They also, not only just the store, but people who are, and for part of that store, have certain, certain public positions in the county.
Well, Mr. Jake, Mr. Jake was chairman of the school board one time, like a chairman of the board, what's her?
Before he retired, he was a relation of the district.
Relation to school board and.
JC Jake served on economic development, very helpful.
Yeah, so a few, a few folks in certain school.
There was another.
Exclusive club there.
Yeah, I served, I served with them.
I, I'm not aware of close session necessarily.
I've never served, sir.
I would entertain a motion, Mr. Chairman. Second, all in favor?
Next, ladies and gentlemen, it's November 17th. The election will be over.
And just, just a reminder, we do have our joint meeting with, uh, the cities, towns, and islands Thursday night at 7:30.
No dinner.
6:30.
Who you got on?
Hey, you know, you all seen the email from Bob Scott?